Good afternoon. The meeting will now come to order. Hello, I am Marsha Herbert, President of the Board of Education. I would like to welcome you to the August 9th, 2023 Board Meeting. In keeping with the Board's commitment to open communication with the community, this meeting is being streamed live on the CCPS website at www.carolkt12.org and broadcast live on Channel 21. We are also recording this meeting so it can be accessed on demand on our website and broadcast throughout the month on Channel 21. Public participation will be held at approximately 5:15. Speakers will be directed into the boardroom from the building lobby and are allotted three minutes to address the Board. As a reminder, please silence all cell phones and other devices. Board members, please turn off your microphones when you are not speaking. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Before we start the meeting, I do want to tell you all that Ms. Sevigny is right there on the screen. She is up virtual tonight, and we will continue on. And Steve Whistler's wife called me and we wanted to make sure that we wore the same color tonight, that Mr. Whistler and I matched. So as we continue on, may I have a motion for the approval of the agenda?
So moved.
By Dr. Dorsey, seconded by?
Second.
By Ms. Pataglia. Comments, questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And it passes unanimously. At this time, I need a motion for the approval of the minutes of the unapproved joint meeting minutes for July 12th, 2023.
So moved.
By Ms. Pataglia, seconded by? By Mr. Whistler. Comments, corrections? I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Now I need a motion for the unapproved Board Meeting Minutes for July 12th.
So moved.
2023, okay. By Dr. Dorsey and seconded by?
I'll second.
Ms. Pataglia. Any corrections to the minutes? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. At this time, we will have the Carroll County Student Government Report. Please, welcome.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for your time. My name is Enya Slawinski. I'm a rising junior at Century High School and your CCSGA Secretary for the 2023-2024 school year. On August 1st and 2nd, CCSGA attended the Maryland Association of Student Council's Advance Retreat in Montgomery County. And I'm proud to announce that we increased our delegation by threefold from three people last year to nine people this year. These nine students got workshop certified and will be presenting their own workshop at one of MASC's three conferences. For more information regarding MASC, you can go online to the MD Stuco webpage. Our Executive Board had its first meeting on August 4th, right here at CCPS Central Office, where we finalized our calendar and began planning for our Advanced Retreat and Fall General Assembly. Additionally, we have come to a consensus about an overall theme for CCSGA, but we can't share that just yet. So if you're interested in finding out, you'll have to come to one of our general assemblies. Also, we had our first-ever staff development day in which our staff members worked on their project proposals that they will be submitting to the President for review. They will then work towards completing these projects by the end of the school year. Finally, we are extremely happy to have such a regionally diverse Board this year and plan on doing school visits to increase awareness of CCSGA. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so much. At this time, we will have public comment. Ms. Pataglia.
To have an orderly presentation of comments by the public, the following guidelines apply. Speakers with a connection to CCPS will be allowed to address the Board for the allotted three minutes. Only those speakers that have registered online and have been notified by the Communications Department will be permitted to speak. Priority will be given to those citizens that are addressing the Board about an item on the current agenda. Citizens not appearing in person for public comment can write to the Board through email or US mail. Public participation is not intended to be a question-and-answer session. However, if citizens have specific questions, the Superintendent will assign a staff member to make contact during the Board meeting to arrange a time to respond to questions. The Superintendent and the Board reserve the right to correct misinformation presented as factual after the conclusion of the public participation period. Statements to the Board should relate to a recent agenda item, an agenda item that is expected to appear in the future, or a matter of general policy over which the Board has authority. Personnel matters pending appeals, the actions or statements of individual staff, or items related to employee negotiations are not appropriate topics and may not be discussed. The Board has scheduled time on the agenda for public participation at approximately 5:15. The Board reserves the right to limit the number of speakers on a particular topic so that all topics may be addressed. Additionally, the Board retains the discretion to allow additional speakers deemed appropriate. The Board is allowing no more than an hour for public participation. Comments are limited to three minutes or less. All comments should be directed to the Board members at the dais. Citizens may only address the Board with their individual comments. Citizens may not stand in for another group or person and read their comments. When the allotted time expires, the speaker is permitted to complete a sentence. Citizens may leave any handouts for the Board members at the table at the back of the boardroom. Please do not approach the dais. Additionally, the public may not display signs or posters during the Board meeting. In lieu of signs, or if you are unable to complete your comments in the allotted time, individuals are encouraged to submit remarks to the Board in writing. Those seated in the audience are asked to be respectful of the speaker and refrain from commenting to the speaker or Board members. Our first speaker this evening is Richard Turner.
Good evening. Let's see, President Herbert, members of the Board of Education, as well as staff. It's a pleasure to be here to bring some good news about national recognition for our partnership between the Community Media Center and Board of Education and Carroll County Chamber of Commerce. It's really a pleasure to be here to do this as the Executive Director, and I want to have a quick moment to have Teresa Bethune, who's our Board Chair, make comment.
We just want to thank the Board of Education for the amazing partnership we have with Carroll County Public Schools. Could not have won this award without it. But also, a lot of other great things that we're able to do with the students, such as our new storage facility and sports broadcasting. So many opportunities, so we really appreciate the Board of Education's support.
Also, I have other Board members here. Of course, we do have some of the staff. Carrie Gaddis, who I also want to recognize, Bill Echols, also Dr. Erin Watley is here. This happened because we submitted a nomination for the Outstanding Teachers Award, which was a video documentation of the event that was done virtually now, almost a year and a half ago, I guess. And so it was really an honor to be able to receive this national award. It was judged nationally. It was a highly competitive category because a number of organizations were submitting virtual events that were done, that were documented during the pandemic. And so it was great to have this national honor, and I think we could not do it without the content. The content was recognizing the outstanding teachers and the help from your staff, particularly Carrie and Brenda Bowers, who helped make the content possible because it's really a recognition of the outstanding work that we do in the county. So this is the award, and we also did a handout of the award that has a link that would bring you to our website that will give you a quick shot summary of what happened at the award ceremony and a summary from the Outstanding Teachers Award. So hopefully you'll be able to check that out as well. Thanks very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Amanda Jaskowski.
Good evening, Commissioner, Board members. As an advocate for education in our community, I deeply appreciate the passion and commitment that everyone here brings to the betterment of our children's futures. I'm here tonight with one of my children, simply as a local parent who deeply values our great public school system. Lately, we've seen heated debates, both locally and at the national level, about the books our students should or shouldn't be reading. I respect every parent's concern for their child's well-being, and I appreciate that these conversations stem from a place of care. I actually was pretty surprised to hear some of the excerpts read aloud here last month, given that youth were present in the room and that others can freely view Board meeting recordings online. However, personally, I'm much more concerned with my child's access to the internet and social media than I am about the books she chooses to read with my guidance. Of course, I recognize that not every book is suitable for every age group, and some books may require extra care and context in how they are presented. But banning books outright risks losing valuable opportunities for learning and dialogue. People in our county greatly value freedom of speech and expression. Limiting the diversity of voices and perspectives that can be expressed, read, and heard is a slippery slope and a threat to a healthy democracy. Many books that are proposed for reconsideration handle complex or challenging topics. These can often serve as crucial learning tools, introducing students to new ideas, stimulating discussion, and helping develop empathy and understanding of others who see the world differently. Curiosity and open-mindedness can equip our kids for any path they choose, whether they want to pursue academia, work in the skilled trades, public service, entrepreneurship, and more. It's also important to trust educators to use potentially challenging material responsibly. Teachers are well-trained to provide the necessary context and guidance to assure students engage with the difficult topics in a constructive manner. As parents, we can be actively engaged, reading with our children and giving feedback on their choices. There are certainly books I've told my own daughter she's not ready for. I do think it's wise to review policies from time to time, such as those related to material selection. However, policy review should not be initiated in response to pressure from outside organizations, but rather to verify alignment with our school system's missions or laws, ensure that policies are current and evidence-based, or to increase transparency for those implementing and/or affected by the policy. So instead of focusing on what books to keep out, let's direct our collective energy toward what we can bring in, enhancing our academic and technical education opportunities. It's about being smart with our resources, making sure our tax dollars are being put to the best possible use and equipping our children for their futures. Let's focus on implementing best practices in our classrooms, supporting the invaluable professionals educating our children, and creating an environment where every student feels they belong. At the end of the day, we want an education for our children that lights up their curiosity, encourages them to ask hard questions, and engage deeply with the world. That's what our kids deserve. This is what I believe our community stands for, and this is what I will continue to advocate for as a member of this community. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker is Gary Foote.
Good afternoon. I'd like to start with a shout-out to our county commissioners and to everyone who has worked tirelessly to address the unfortunate events of the last few days. The county, the state, and the nation have taken notice. Great things happen when elected officials, government employees, and the private sector work together. May it be that we don't need to wait for another crisis to see such cooperation in the future. And also, good afternoon, Board members. Superintendent McCabe, and a special welcome to our student member of the Board, Sahitha Sudhakar. My name is Gary Foote. I am a county resident and a teacher at South Carroll High School, and I apologize for being late with this welcome, but I did want to clear up some misinformation that was printed in the newspaper. When the Carroll County Times reported in June that outgoing student representative Emily Tadeshi didn't need a vote to make an impact, they were wrong. The time has come to recognize that students do not shed their rights when they enter a classroom door. Voting rights have been extended to students in other counties. In this regard, Carroll County lags behind. So what would change if the student member had a vote? There would be more discussion regarding banning bullets as opposed to books or flags. Less attention would be given to those who have more hate in their hearts than knowledge in their heads. Liberty would not mean one group's supposed freedom to decide what books and ideas are available to students. And the Board's focus would be redirected towards teaching and learning as opposed to symbolic issues that get voters fired up but do nothing to promote good education. There is a disconnect between those who have a direct stake in our schools and the people who vote in our school board elections. Sometimes, the interests of the voters are aligned with the students. Too often, however, they are not. There is a simple way to bridge this disconnect, give students a vote, and pay attention to their voice. Here's a book I recently borrowed from the library. Notice it has a cover to protect the book from me and my messiness. Unfortunately, we have voters who think it should be the other way around. Instead of protecting books from people, they think we need to protect people from books, from the words and ideas they contain. Protect books and preserve them, yes. Protect people from books, there is no need. A student's voice would bring much-needed clarity if only we would listen. What is it in any of this that makes you afraid?
The next speaker is Ronald Zep.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity. My name is Ronald Zep, and I am a born and raised Carroll Countyan, and at least third generation who went through the Carroll County Public School System. And my grandkids are the fifth generation. I was employed as an installation and service technician for a major utility company and worked here in Carroll County. When installing services for people moving to Carroll County, I would always ask, out of curiosity, what made you choose Carroll County as your home? Nine out of 10 of the answers would be, "The public school system here is excellent." Even though they may be working in neighboring counties, they wanted the best for their kids and found Carroll County's public schools to be excellent. My heart would always pump up knowing that many of my relatives, friends, and neighbors worked in the public school system in administration, as well as principals, vice principals, teachers, and even to my mom's first cousin, Charles Eckhart. One thing that Carroll Countyans always had was respect for those involved in the public school system. We knew them and had complete confidence in their educational expertise, and trust was automatic. Not only do I trust the teachers with my grandkids' education, but I would trust them with their lives. And in today's environment, it's more of a reality than we want to believe. My 16-year-old granddaughter, her two friends, and my grandson, age 10, knew their granddaddy went to a Board of Education meeting last month and knew it was on YouTube. They thought it would be cool to see their granddaddy on YouTube, so they watched it. Thankfully, my granddaughter stopped the video after the first speaker started talking to remove my grandson from hearing anymore. But they went on to watch the rest of the video. They were appalled that someone would read a pornographic passage from a book at a Board meeting. She said she had never seen a book in the library that was pornographic, and if she did, she wouldn't read it anyway. Now I ask you, who has exposed the kids to this kind of pornography? It was not the library, the administration, or the teachers. It was an outside organization that tried to use shock treatment to sensationalize their organizations and themselves to the Carroll County Board of Education. Our Superintendent spoke of the process we already have in Carroll County in reference to book reviews. The process has been around a long time and is now in review. This out-of-state organization is using a list of books set up from a group they are affiliated with. Carroll County has and continues to excel in running our school system. We don't need an out-of-state organization. I urge everyone to research this organization.
Please finish your thought.
So I asked the Carroll County Board of Education, many of which were excellent educators right here in Carroll County, to let the Superintendent do her job. Let the school administrators do theirs and allow our teachers the expertise and education teach. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm sorry if I mispronounced the last name. Stephanie Semansky?
You got it. Good afternoon, Board members, Commissioner, Superintendent. I would like to reiterate what the folks who were here speaking already, what they've said. I too am a longtime resident of Carroll County. I'm a fifth generation. My daughter makes six. I went to South Carroll High School. She went to Westminster High. We've had a lengthy time here in the county being residents, and yes, we do, and we have always been very proud of our school system. And the reason I'm here today is that I'm concerned about recent attempts to remove or to suggest removal of books from the Carroll County Public Schools Media Centers. As a parent, I find it to be my responsibility to decide what my child should read or not read. I would not tell anybody else what they should or should not read, what their child should or should not read. I might say to a friend, "I really enjoyed this book. That was fun." Or say to a friend, "I really didn't enjoy a book for whatever reason." But taking it off a list when there might be something there that's helpful for a child or any grown-up who might actually get something from it to help them in their life, I find that to be difficult to swallow. So fortunately, we always talk things over with our daughter. And the other thing that I would like to just say real quickly is that, in my opinion, liberty means that I'm allowed to read what I want to read, and someone else is allowed not to read what they don't want to read. But that doesn't mean it doesn't need to be in the school systems' media centers. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Michael Weiner. All right, that's all for public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Pataglia. And now we will move on to employee groups.
Good evening, Superintendent McCabe, members of the Board of Education, and Commissioner Vigliotti. I am Cindy Porter, President of CASE, representing assistants, clericals, and LPNs in Carroll County Public Schools. I know it's surprising to some, but as we all know, we find ourselves with the beginning of the 2023-2024 school year just a few weeks away. As President of CASE and representative of our entire bargaining unit, I am greatly concerned about the number of current vacancies for positions within our bargaining unit. Earlier today, on the CCPS website, there were 21 instructional support positions, three secretarial and clerical support positions, which are advertised through job vacancy emails and on the CCPS website. There were also 36 student support assistant and clerical hourly positions vacant, which were advertised on the school website. Some vacancies are due to added positions this year, but many are because of the continual turnover in the support professions. That concerns me because it leaves students without needed supports that they deserve and require. And it also concerns me because of the cost to the school system and the continual onboarding and recruiting cost when these positions turn over. CCPS has made strides in recognizing the importance of these positions and the value of those who fill them. But there is more work to be done to get highly qualified candidates and retain them because of the professionals that we now know they are. CASE Bargaining Unit members stand ready to be an important part of the process again this year to help our students achieve success. Thank you.
Thank you. That's good, Celeste, you're getting there.
That's right. Just got rid of the cane yesterday. Good evening, Superintendent McCabe, Board members, and Commissioner. I'm Celeste Jordan, President of CCEA. While the commercials have started claiming to be the most wonderful time of year, showing parents happily purchasing school supplies for their children. Every year, educators face seeing the Crayola display way too soon, and we try to resist going down that aisle, but there's always a chance our favorite pens are on sale. School supplies can be a major expense for families, and I wanted to take this opportunity to make sure that families know that there is help if they need it for school supplies. Please call your child's school and ask to speak to either their school counselor, PPW, or administrator, and let them know about your child. Trust me that there is help available at all of our schools. Also, trust me that your child's teacher will also always accept donations of tissues for their classrooms. Non-lotion, please. I had foot reconstruction surgery on May 31st and was non-weight-bearing for six very long weeks. On July 11th, I was cleared to walk, and when I stood up on both feet for the first time in that surgeon's office, I was kind of frozen because I wasn't sure how to walk. So for 50-some years, I have not thought about walking, and now I cannot figure out how to do it. The last four weeks have been mentally exhausting trying to remember which foot goes first, depending on the situation, how far can I walk before the foot becomes too swollen, and how to swing my arms after not using them for six weeks while using a walker and a scooter. Why am I sharing this? Because we all need to remember that learning isn't easy. Learning, or for me, relearning, requires mental stamina. Students are not going to be perfect at every new thing they do. It takes practice and perseverance. Doing difficult things can be uncomfortable, and it can seem easier to quit. As the new school year approaches, let's try to remember what it's like to be a student learning a topic for the first time. Let's do everything we can as a community to support our students and not let them quit on themselves. Let's remember that struggling or being uncomfortable is okay, and often, struggle and discomfort brings about the greatest growth for a person. Let's remind students that just because you practice, work hard, and persevere, it does not mean you're going to get top honors or win the first prize. And that is also okay. As Vince Lombardi said, "Perfection is not attainable, but if we chase perfection, we will catch excellence." Good evening.
Thank you. At this time, we will have Board Member activities and correspondence, and we're going to start all the way over to the left with our student representative. Good evening.
Hello, everyone. Now that summer is coming to a close, I hope all students have enjoyed their summer vacations. I also wish students good luck with tryouts today, and I hope everything works out well for them. This month, on August 1st and 2nd, I attended the Maryland Association of Student Council's Advance. This was held at the Environmental Center in Montgomery County. It's basically their version of outdoor school. I, along with a few members of CCSGA, were able to complete our workshop certification on day one, which means that we will all be presenting workshops at Maryland Association of Student Council events. And this will happen during the school year. Day two consisted of the Executive Board meeting, which me and our CCSGA President gave our county reports. This was an incredible opportunity in which I had met with student representatives and student members on the Board of Education all across the state. I also attended the MAB, which is Maryland Association of Boards of Education, New Student Board Member Orientation on August 3rd. This was a virtual seminar where I was able to speak with a lot of students who are in the same position as me, and I was able to prepare myself for the upcoming year. And finally, CCSGA held its first Executive Board meeting on August 4th, and we were able to start planning many events for the upcoming school year. We also had one earlier today. We are excited to see a lot of schools participating in CCSGA. However, we are dealing with the issue of busing students for our general assemblies. Along with that, this year, I'm planning to visit schools as well, so hopefully, we can get school visits for the student representatives started this year.
Thank you. Ms. Pataglia.
So I spent the remainder of July preparing for the Carroll County 4-H Fair. The fair began July 29th with sheep, and then proceeded throughout the week with dairy cows and meat cows and meat sheep and swine. And it ended Friday, August 4th, with the livestock auction. I want to congratulate all those that participated in the 4-H Fair. It was a very nice turnout. I saw lots of families there. These kids work really hard all year long and sometimes two years in the making with their projects. It is definitely not easy for a 120-pound young man to tug around a 1,500-pound steer. And as a 100-pound woman, it was a little difficult in itself, too. So I can, I give a lot of kudos for parents who help out their kids with all these projects. I do want to give a huge thank you to all the volunteers from the fair, all that purchased cakes, which there was a new record this year. The reserved grand champion brought in $50,000. So that is an all-time new record. That's a big, that was chocolate peanut butter, too. And... And the grand champion brought in $15,000. And as a mom of a kid who is part of that grand champion club, there's not many. There's not many kids who are in that club, and it's, it's a lot of pride for that parent because that cake makes history. So it's really cool to have here in Carroll County for that. The livestock auction, you know, all the businesses and everyone that contributed towards that, and to the parents that supported their kid with their projects. Again, I mean, it's a lot of time. And of course, in the process, now it's time to begin planning for next year. The Maryland State Fair begins August 24th through the 27th, August 31st through September 4th, and September 7th through the 10th in Timonium. So make sure you can get down there as possible. And this is a statewide fair, so it's interesting to see, you know, what other counties have to offer. As we begin to gear up for back-to-school, and when you are going to back-to-school events, please be sure to ask your child's teacher what they need. As Ms. Jordan said, yes, they always need tissues. That is always a plus, but always ask them what else that you can possibly get them for their classrooms. A couple of years ago, there was a, like a, I think it was a comedian, but it hadn't made so much sense, you know? If you want the rug, I will buy you the rug. If you want a picture, I'll buy you a picture. If you want 20 notebooks, I'll buy you 20 notebooks. Just always ask the teacher what you can contribute to their classroom and help them out. Parents of college students, the time has now come for moving day or already has passed. As we prepare to send our children out into the wild or the world, however we want to look at it, we have done a great job as parents getting them this far. We'll be okay. We may cry. We may be nervous, but we're also excited for the journey that they are about to begin as individuals. In the class of 2024, the time has come where you are the kings and queens of your high school. Make those memories. Make those memories count, and this is your time to shine. And, you know, as we were discussing before the meeting, you know, enjoy every moment of it because it's going to go fast. Your last year is going to go fast. I want to wish all the students good luck that are at their practices and tryouts for fall sports and bands. And to our teachers, our staff, and our bus drivers, please enjoy these last days of summer. I hope you got some much deserved rest, enjoyed your time with your families, and I personally want to thank you for all the work that you do. It does not, you know, we notice it. We see it. And I just want you to know, we do appreciate it, and good luck to everyone. Couple of weeks ago.
Thank you. Ms. Vigney, do you want to have any correspondence?
Thanks, Ms. Herbert. I just want to, I wanted to let everyone know, I am home very sick tonight, so that's why I was not joining in person, but I did definitely want to be present for the discussions and the votes tonight. So I am joining virtually, but I don't have much of a voice, so I'm going to save it. And I'm just going to say, I'd love to echo what Ms. Pataglia said in her comments. She did a fabulous job. And wishing everybody well in the upcoming year.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Whistler?
Skipping, saving the best for last. Hello, everyone. The North Carroll Business Alliance invited me and Major Dave Stem of the Carroll County Sheriff's Department to speak with business leaders on July 20th about the impact of legalized cannabis in our schools and our community. I appreciated my board colleagues, Marsha Herbert and Tyra Pataglia, and Manchester Valley High School Student Resource Officer Deputy Bruguette for also being there to help us outline the procedures and policies we follow to help keep controlled substances out of our schools. On July 27th, I stopped by our central office here to thank several applicants for their interest in joining our CCPS team and helping our students grow. I really appreciate the countless number of administrators, supervisors, and teachers who are recruiting and interviewing every applicant. We still have a lot of vacancies, as one of our employer groups mentioned earlier, very, very concerning to all of us. But we are closing the gap on the number of teacher vacancies, which is nice. But again, together, you're doing everything behind the scenes that we need to ensure we have a terrific 23-24 school year, so thank you for your time. I too had the opportunity to stop by our 4-H FFA fair a few times between July 29th and August 4th. I did attend the Chamber of Commerce breakfast on the 31st, the cake auction on August 2nd, and the livestock auction on August 4th. I am incredibly grateful for our community coming together to raise over $150,000 alone at the cake auction. I think it was over $152,000. So many came together to help our kids succeed, help them grow and learn over the summer months, and everything they do helps keep this event free every year. So for the 126th year of our fair, thank you so much for everyone for doing what they did. On August 1st, I accepted the invitation of Manchester's mayor and town council to participate in their national night out. It was great seeing over 300 Manchester residents come out and show their appreciation for our police, our firefighters, and our first responders. I want to thank all of the local businesses and community residents that donated, what I saw were hundreds of gifts and giveaways they gave for the kids. I don't think a single kid left the field empty-handed. I'd also like to remind everyone that next week, August 13th through August 19th, is tax-free shopping week. So if you're like me and a procrastinator putting off buying things for your kids for school, it all worked out. Next week is tax-free shopping, so please take advantage of it. And then finally, to echo what my colleagues have already said, we're going to have a great school year because of everyone in this building, all of our principals and staff and administrators and our teachers, every stakeholder working together. It's going to be a great year, and I'm really excited. Thanks for letting me be a part of it.
Thank you. Dr. Dorsey?
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Herbert. Very short list for this month. On July 17th, I attended our MAB Equity Committee meeting, and the committee at that time reviewed MAB's sample educational equity policy along with the definitions, outcomes, guidelines, and strategies for engaging our boards in reviewing our policies on educational equity. And we all know that this is a policy that is required by COMAR. On July 18th, I worked with our Conference Program Committee for MAB. Our program committee continues to refine plans for our upcoming conference in October. And I know Mrs. Herbert is already registered to attend along with Dr. McCabe, and again, hopefully some of our other board members can be in attendance as well. And it also includes our student rep, you know, for participating in our conference. And it is so amazing how quickly time just goes by. I mean, it's hard to imagine that we're at this point of the month of August. I mean, it seems like when we were together in June, we felt like we had a super-long summer break, but we can see those days sort of dwindling now. So again, I know that staff members will be geared up and ready to start another school year with our students. And I've always taken pride and really appreciation for our profession of teaching. It's, as I've said before, it's one of those occupations that no matter how great the prior year has had been, or maybe it wasn't so great, we can always hit a reset button and we can start again, and it's always exciting. And not only have I seen students returning excited and ready to start the school year, but it's just great when you can see staff members, administrators, and everyone just all geared up for a fresh, new start. So my wishes for a great school year to everyone.
Thank you. Commissioner Vigliotti, would you like to say a few words about anything that went on this week? I don't mean to put you on the spot.
No, no, that's alright. Am I on?
Yes, you are. I just thought you might want to say a few words.
Well, I just want to say from the bottom of my heart, thank you everybody for meeting with us last month in that joint meeting. Despite, I guess I found out belatedly that no commissioner attended last month's Board of Ed meeting. I promise that was not personal. I volunteered to be here tonight. I'm very happy to be here tonight. And, you know, I've heard from a number of citizens, not just in District 1, but throughout the county, who are incredibly grateful that this Board of Education has a close working relationship with the Board of Commissioners. And they are incredibly happy that both bodies are paying such attention to the education of our young people. And they are also grateful to see the camaraderie and the cooperation between us. And, you know, really is always a pleasure whenever I get the opportunity to be the volunteer commissioner of these meetings. So thank you very much for having me.
Well, we definitely appreciate that. We really do. And that makes life much easier. Most of you know, of course, August is 4-H week for us, too. I attended the fair several times again. And, but, I only didn't see my granddaughter's show, but we saw a lot of other students that go to Carroll County Public Schools. I saw staff. I also saw many, many, many children that I taught that are now having their children show their pigs and steers and all that stuff. So anyway, it was so good to see so many people out at the fair. And we cannot thank our volunteers and our businesses that make that fair a success. So I just wanted to put that on. And then, of course, then the state fair's coming up, and it used to be the 10 best days of summer, and then it was the 11th best days of summer. Now it's three weeks best of summer. So anyway, appreciate that, and there's a lot of things you can do there. And then on another note, can't thank everyone working so diligently in Ernesto's group trying to hire more, not only educators, but we need custodians. And for once, I don't think I'm jumping up and down and saying we need more bus drivers. I want to thank all the bus drivers that we do have. Don't leave. But we do need more custodians, more secretaries. We need a little bit of everything, so we definitely have plenty of job opportunities. And then September 5th, we have over 25,000 students that will be returning to school. And for some of you, safety is very important to us, and our community numbers are priority, our students. They'll be walking to school. They'll be at their bus stops, and they will be waiting for their buses. And I know exactly at 482, they run bus stops. Whether the flashing lights are on, they just run by you. So I'm just trying to reiterate to everyone, traffic patterns change. When their buses are back on the road, we need to be paying attention. And when the lights are on, you need to slow down, and when they're red, I hope you've already stopped and not passing the bus and getting a picture of your car. And then please, I've taken notice, and maybe it's just because of what goes on on the roads now, but people don't use their blinkers anymore. I don't know why we have blinkers on cars. If we're not going to use them, we don't need them. So please, when you're going to make a turn, it's prior to making the turn, not while you're making the turn. And we have buses on the roads now with our children, so please, I just want everyone to be aware that things have changed. School is going to be back in session, and please be safe with our children, and please be safe on the roads. Use your blinkers. And educators, thank you. I know some of you have already probably been in school putting up your bulletin boards and lining your desk up and doing the lockers and all that stuff. And for me, it was like, right now, I'd have to be blowing up the balls. That's what my father would always say. I would blow the balls up in the beginning of the year and then let the air out at the end. But I said, yes, Dad, that's exactly what I do. Besides, I get home to nine o'clock at night while I was coaching field hockey and then doing track and field in the spring, and never seeing me on the weekends. But I hope everyone the best year coming up, and let's hope it's positive. We've got some really great things going, and no one has mentioned this, but we've got a new school that we're going to open in a couple of weeks. Mr. Marx has promised us, and me, because let me tell you, I've been in his office quite a bit, and I asked him the other week if he was a good poker player at the last meeting, because I wasn't sure if he was really telling us the truth about everything, about opening and all that. He has promised me that we're going to be okay. Now, the school bus loop and a few other things will not be perfect, but I am so excited about, now we're going to get East Middle open, and have a great year. I can't believe we're going to, next meeting, well, they already have been in school. All right. Dr. McCabe?
This evening, I'd like to begin by thanking Richard Turner for speaking at our meeting this evening and for sharing the great news that the Community Media Center has received the Hometown Media Award for its production of the 2022 Outstanding Teacher Awards. Recognizing our outstanding teachers is always a highlight of our school year. When we were not able to hold our annual in-person event, the CMC provided our students, parents, and community with an opportunity to celebrate our teachers through this virtual production. We are very grateful to the CMC for realizing the importance of recognizing our employees for their hard work and dedication during an especially difficult year. Thank you again to the CMC, and congratulations on this much deserved award. Next, congratulations to Ella Roberts, a 2022 graduate and FFA member from Westminster High School who received two distinguished awards at this summer's Maryland FFA Convention. Ella was recognized for her achievements in FFA, agricultural education, and supervised agricultural experience, otherwise known as SAE, by receiving the Maryland FFA state degree. This is the highest level of membership in Maryland and is earned by less than 10% of FFA members in the state. Additionally, she was named the Maryland FFA State Star in Agricultural Placement, the highest achievement in Maryland for FFA members with SAE programs that include work-study in paid and unpaid internships. Ella will represent Westminster High School and Maryland in a regional stars competition to be held in the fall in conjunction with the Big E in Massachusetts. She is the sixth consecutive Maryland FFA State Star from the Westminster High School FFA program. And finally, I would like to congratulate Derek Day, a senior at Westminster High School, and Emily Brines, his business education teacher, who were the winners of both the People's Choice Awards and the $10,000 grand prize in the 2023 Carroll Biz Challenge. They were selected for their business, LDOT, a mobile phone application used to help blind people navigate their surroundings more easily. Derek, who is blind, created LDOT in the classroom when Ms. Brines tasked students with creating a business plan. He used his self-taught knowledge of technology and artificial intelligence to create this groundbreaking application. With the help of Ms. Brines, LDOT became a viable business that is now available to everyone. Congratulations to both Derek and Emily on this outstanding accomplishment, and best wishes for continued success. And I will just reiterate what others have said up here. By the time we meet again at the next board meeting, school will have started. So I just want to say again, I'm excited. I know we are excited, all are excited, for the beginning of a new school year, and we look forward to seeing our staff and students return once again.
Well, thank you very much. At this time, we will have a construction report.
This is the monthly report on our major construction projects. Although we always have a little anxiety as we plan to open a brand-new building and continue the ongoing modernization of another, I am pleased to share that everything remains on schedule. I did want to share a little bit about the East Middle project. I've had the opportunity to see the work unfold as we are nearing the moment of opening, and it has been amazing to see the building come together. I'm excited that we'll be able to offer our students a brand-new, exciting facility this year. We have elected officials in just before the start, we have asked our elected officials in just before the start of the school year to thank them for the project and allow them to see the new facility. The demolition of the old building is also going smoothly, and there will be various ways in which the legacy of the original school is carried forward in our new building. I wanted to share something that we are certainly, that we've certainly discussed at the beginning of this project, but it has been a while since we've mentioned it again. As exciting as it is, there will always be a few hiccups with moving into a new school. Those things will all always work out. One thing to remind everyone is that for the fall semester, there will be challenges with parking, buses, and parent motorists. This has always been known and anticipated. Until the old building is removed and the site is graded and the new parking lot and bus loop completed, there will be those few months where we will need everyone to be understanding and patient as we work through this transition. Our facilities and transportation teams have been working with the school- Our facilities and transportation teams have been working with the school administration, the county staff, and the city to ensure the best possible scenario, but we know there will be some stress. We will all work through the process together and do our best for our students. As always, Mr. Marx is here for any questions you may have.
Any questions? I cannot thank you enough. I know you've had a few gray hairs, but thank you so much. All right, thank you. All right, now we will move on to the report on the Carroll County Community Advisory Council Agenda Topics and Action Plan for 2023 to 2024.
Board members, this is the month each year where we bring a couple of items related to our board-appointed committees. As a report, we bring the agenda topics and plan for each committee for your information and input. This evening, we have a report for each of those committees contained under items 5B through 5H. In some ways, you may have been informed of these topics at your June meeting, which is the month where each committee reports on the activities from the prior year, but often, they also forecast for the future year. We have the staff liaisons for each committee with us, and I would propose that the board feel free to ask any questions or discuss any of the seven reports contained here on the agenda in items 5B through 5H at this time.
Comments, questions? So we want to do all these together?
We can.
Do you want to do these together?
I can, but can we start with them?
Yes. Yes, okay, so, CAC. Anybody have any comments or questions? I know Ms. Gaddis is right on it, and they already have their agenda of what they're going to do, and they already have their meeting dates. Any other comments? Yes, sir.
I'm not sure if this was the committee or not, but didn't one committee need a board rep? Did I read?
Not CAC.
Wasn't CAC?
No, it wasn't. Tyrus, yeah, Tyrus, that. We'll go through it and we'll see what we need, okay? Because if we do, then it's Tagguret. Okay, now we will move on to a report of the Carroll County Teachers Advisory Council Agenda Topics and Action Plan for 2023-2024. Any comments, questions? All right, we will move on then. Mr. Whistler, we will look at that and make sure that you are taken care of. And now we will look for 5C, Report on the Carroll County Teachers Advisory Council Agenda Topics and Action Plan for 2023-2024. That's what it says for C. Anything? All right, now we're going to move on to number D. 5D, Report on the Carroll County Career and Technical Education Local Advisory Council Agenda Topics and Plan for 23-24.
And I think we're going through these so quickly because we've already previewed.
We've already done, yeah, we've already reviewed these. Okay. 5E, Report on the Carroll County Curriculum Council Agenda Topics and Action Plan for 2023-24. We have the whole overview there in front of us. All right. 5F, Report of the Carroll County Special Education Citizens Advisory Committee Agenda Topics and Action Plans for 2023-24. All right. 5G, Report on the Carroll County Security Advisory Council Agenda Topics and Action Plan for 2023 and 24. Their dates are there, it has exactly what it's talking about. And 5G, Report on the Carroll County Security Advisory Council Agenda Topic and Action Plan for 2023-2024. And I think we have a meeting on Thursday already. And if you want to say something, they'll kill you, so you've got to be quiet about that one. I think that's what they told me when I was put on that committee. So I don't know, I don't know if it's changed or not. All right. Now, 5H, Report on the Carroll County Family Life Advisory Committee Agenda Topics. All right, we will move on now to action items. Now I need a motion for the approval of personnel action items. By Dr. Dorsey, seconded by Ms. Pataglia. Dr. McCabe.
The hiring season remains in full swing, and our HR team, our supervisors, and school leaders are all hard at work finding the best candidates for our students. We have noted that the teacher shortage is very much a regional, state, and national concern at this time, and that we must compete with every Maryland school system in the surrounding area. But our folks do the best that they can to find the most qualified candidates for every role. Tonight's personnel action items include 65 new hires, two releases from contracts, eight promotions, 10 leaves of absence, and four increases in FTE.
Any comments, questions?
Can we just ask, so we had talked about how we're kind of closing the gap on a lot of the teacher positions, but how many does this leave us with, Dr. McCabe? Open spots?
Ernesto.
Mr. Diaz, can you come on up?
And by the way, I'm not supposed to be receiving taxes, but I just got them from my school bus buddies, and they said, yes, they still need school bus drivers. So I'm just putting that clause into, we need school bus drivers.
Good afternoon, Board Commissioner. So we are looking at 22 classroom teaching vacancies at this point. So we're in a good spot, we still are working very hard to fill those positions. If we include some of the other positions like speech-language pathologists, there are 13 of those in addition. So, but we're at 22 classroom teaching positions now.
Thank you. All right, well, thank you very much.
My pleasure.
All right, I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Now I need a motion for the approval of personnel appointments.
So moved.
By Ms. Pataglia, seconded by?
I'll second it.
By Dr. Dorsey. Dr. McCabe.
This evening, we have seven appointments. First, Sarah Aiello, from Office of World Languages Specialist in Baltimore County Public Schools, to Assistant Supervisor of Modern and World Languages in Curriculum and Instruction. Christine Hill, from Assistant Principal at Sykesville Middle, to Acting Local Accountability Coordinator in Testing and School Performance. Melissa Leahy, Hourly Teacher in Student Services, 2.5 School Psychologist in Student Services. Christine Lesch, from Biology Teacher at Winters Mill High School, to Assistant Principal at Manchester Valley High School. Joseph Morningstar, from Assistant Supervisor of Maintenance and Operations in Maintenance and Operations, to Supervisor of Maintenance and Operations in Maintenance and Operations. Next, Michael Passon, from Instrumental Music Teacher at Sykesville Middle School, to Acting Assistant Principal at Sykesville Middle School. And finally, Laura Shriver, from Hourly Teacher in Student Services, to 2.5 School Psychologist in Student Services.
Thank you. Comments or questions? I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? It passes unanimously. Now I need a motion for the approval of Award of Bids. By Ms. Pataglia, seconded by Mr. Whistler. Thank you. Dr. McCabe.
There are only eight items on the monthly Award of Bids list. First, we have trauma-related services. This is a 16-month contract to provide behavioral health services to meet the needs of students and families who have experienced past or current trauma. Second, we have a chiller compressor at Liberty High School. This is a replacement and installation of a chiller compressor. Third, we have our furnished and installed engineered wood fiber. This is an annual contract for the delivery of wood fiber to schools as needed for playground areas. Fourth, we have life insurance and long-term disability benefits. This is an award of a contract to provide employee life insurance and long-term disability benefits. The recommended award is to a provider with whom we have had past positive experience and does come with some annual saving. Fifth, we have our food sanitation services and cleaning program. This is a piggyback award for services to maintain safe and clean school cafeterias. The award includes supplies as well as safety and best practice training. Six, we have beverages and vending machines. Again, this is a piggyback award for beverages sold in vending machines during school lunch shifts. Seven, we have academic curriculum and instructional services, the renewal of our contract to provide home and hospital instruction and related services to our home and hospital students. And finally, we have the emergency procurement of a chiller and refrigerant, of, sorry, chiller refrigerant at Winters Mill High School. The announcement of emergency procurement that was required to maintain the HVAC system at Winters Mill High School this summer. Questions?
Thank you. Ms. Sevigney.
Thanks, Ms. Herbert. I just had a couple of quick questions. The first one was on number three, the playground engineered wood fiber. Can you help me remember, is this an annual expense that we will be incurring for the various playgrounds?
Yes, Mrs. Sevigney. We bring this, I believe, annually. Sometimes it may be a contract that has a renewal, but usually it's an annual contract. And this is for the product, but also the delivery and the dispersment of the product at each school as they need it.
Okay, okay, so that covers all elementary schools or locations that are needed?
Correct.
Okay. And the other question I had was, can you remind me what category nine is? Are number five and six covered by the food services budget, or do these come out of the general operating budget?
Out of the Food Service Program Fund.
Okay, they're both out of food service. Okay. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Are there any other questions? I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed?
Aye.
It passes unanimously. Now I need a motion for the approval of the Carroll County Special Education Citizens Advisory Committee Membership. By Ms. Pataglia, seconded by?
I'll second it.
Dr. Dorsey.
As mentioned during the reports, August is the month where we bring the annual charge for each board-appointed committee. We also bring as an action item for your approval the membership for each board-appointed committee. For action items 6D through 6I, we are seeking your action on the membership of each committee, beginning with 6D, the Special Education Citizens Advisory Committee.
Comments or questions? Okay, I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
It passes unanimously. Now I need a motion of the approval of the Carroll County Security Advisory Council Membership 2023-2024.
So moved.
By Dr. Dorsey, seconded by Ms. Pataglia. Yep, okay. No other comments, questions? I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Now I need approval of the Carroll County Career and Technical Education Local Advisory Council Membership for 2023-2024. And seconded by Mr. Whistler. Comments or questions? Oh, Donna, do you have something, Ms. Sevigney?
Oh, I was just trying to quickly see if we had the board member representative listed on each of these. For the last two, we did, I'm trying to, yeah, I'm trying to locate it on the career and tech one.
It's Ms. Pataglia.
It's Ms. Pataglia, okay, and it's on here. Okay, great.
We've got to get Mr. Whistler on some things here. We'll have to look at that. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Now, I need a motion for the approval of the Carroll County Curriculum Council Membership for 2023-2024. By Ms. Pataglia, seconded by?
I'll second it.
By Dr. Dorsey. Questions? I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Now I need approval of the Carroll County Teachers Advisory Council Membership. By Ms. Pataglia, seconded by Mr. Whistler. Comments, questions?
Mr. Whistler, I'm not sure which committees you had an interest in joining, but given my change in schedule recently, I mean, I have been the Teacher Advisory Council rep for quite some time, and if this is one that you wanted to step in or maybe be the alternative, the alternate rep?
Always willing to serve.
All right, thank you. We'll do that change, Ms. Sevigney. Thank you.
Okay, so for the Teacher Advisory Council, we'll have Steve as the step.
Yes.
Okay, I can continue as the alternate.
Yeah, absolutely. Because Mr. Whistler doesn't have any.
As my wife would say, I need supervision. And I can't think of a better person.
All right, I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? It passes unanimously. Now we need approval of the Carroll County Community Advisory Council Members, 2023-24, by Ms. Pataglia, seconded by? By Mr. Whistler.
This one, I would like to continue serving on.
Okay.
I've been on that since?
Okay.
The dawn of being on the board.
I don't have a problem with that. All right, I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? It passes unanimously. Now I need an approval of before and after-school childcare leases for 2023-2024. So moved by Dr. Dorsey, and seconded by Ms. Pataglia.
Each year, we begin for approval for before and after-school childcare leases. The parent-teacher organization at each elementary school may work with approved providers to offer before and after care. Our facilities department then prepare lease agreements for the childcare providers, which exist at 19 out of 22 elementary schools. We lease the space to the providers on a standard square footage cost.
Thank you. Dr. Dorsey.
Yes, I just have a question concerning Calladay. How long have we used the services of this company? I'm familiar with the ABC Care and the Y, but I'm wondering about Calladay.
And I'm thinking as I'm approaching the podium, because Calladay was, they weren't ABC. Calladay changed their name, but they were a long-running program in the system. I'm going to remember it as soon as I walk back there.
Okay.
But for quite some time.
Okay. When you think of it, you can come back.
That's right. You can let us know. Anything else? Any other comments?
Just a quick question about the three elementary schools that we don't have childcare. Could you just refresh our memories as to why we don't have them in those particular schools?
Mr. Prokop is making his way back up.
I was in a rush to get back. It's just business decisions based on the participation at each of the schools. So if the parents, for instance, if there's a childcare provider outside, you know, outside that has a close, a facility close by, they may participate in that way. But most of the providers that have elected not to provide service in schools, it's usually that there's just not enough participation to make it worthwhile business decision.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'm just did some basic, is it hotspots? Is that what they used to be called? I just looked up Calladay hotspots. I was going to do the same thing you just did, look it up. From the government, I'm here to help.
All right. Any other questions while we have Mr. Prokop up there? All right, thanks, dear. Okay, I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? It passes unanimously. Now I do need a motion for the approval of transfer of school bus contracts. Contracts. By Ms. Pataglia, seconded by? By Mr. Whistler.
Periodically, our independent bus contractors seek to transfer contracts for various routes from one contractor to another. After those requests are approved by our staff, we bring them for your approval. We have one contract transfer this year. We have one contract transfer this evening.
Questions, comments? I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? It passes unanimously. Now I need a motion for the approval of the Carroll County Health Department Contract, Vision and Hearing Screening Follow-Up. By Dr. Dorsey, seconded by? Ms. Pataglia.
This is the annual contract to provide vision and hearing screening follow-ups for students as required by state law. This is a cost-sharing arrangement between CCPS and CCHD.
Comments? I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? It passes unanimously. Now I need a motion for the approval of the FY23 Operating Budget Transfer 23-02. So moved by Ms. Pataglia, seconded by Mr. Whistler. Thank you.
We are bringing an FY23 Operating Budget Transfer for your approval this evening. Our staff have closed out the accounting for the two-year Extended Learning Opportunity Program that we've been calling ELO. That final accounting, which concludes the legislated ELO program, requires a final transfer to align major categories. Also, the accounting of the charges for the fire at South Carroll High School late this spring also requires a transfer to balance categories. And finally, we have one final budget adjustment based on final accounting to cover custodial supply costs and some in-kind services from the county. As always, once you approve budget transfers, under law, they go to the commissioners within 30 days for their approval.
Ms. Savigny?
Thanks, Ms. Herbert. I had a question about what overall impact this will have on fund balance for the year. Do we have an understanding of whether we're going to be net positive or net negative to fund balance after all the accounting is finished?
Mr. O'Neil?
It'll just wash out, Mrs. Savigny. So I think because of the uniqueness of the ELO program and what that's brought for the last couple of years, it's just, you know, it doesn't change the overall sort of grand total figure that we close out fiscal '23 with. We just by law have to have the right amount of money in each of the major categories so that there's no deficit in one category while there's an overage in the other. So it's more the mechanics of accounting to make sure all of the i's are dotted and t's are crossed relative to the major categories. And then with your action tonight and then the commissioners, this will all roll into your single financial audit that usually is in the September, October timeframe. But it's not going to change the, it's not going to change the forecast for fund balance any more than it would have been otherwise. It's just making sure that there's no major category in deficit.
Okay, so we had enough overage in, or I guess, coverage in certain categories to cover the overages for the ELO program, and we did not have to dip into fund balance to make any of these transfers.
Correct. And then a lot of, if you think back, a lot of, if not all, I'm not sure standing here, but a lot of the ELO was funded with federal ester money. So it, you know, you did adjustments at some point in the past to recognize that money. This will sort of, once this all washes out, there'll be all of that exchange of one-time money. And not that that can't happen again, but your 24-budget, 25-budget hopefully would be a little easier to understand because those major amounts of federal funds will sort of be gone, almost gone. At that point, there's still some lingering.
Okay, okay. But we're still projected to have a net increase to the fund balance after all the accounting is said and done for this year.
Correct, absolutely, yes.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you.
All right, any other comments or questions? I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? It passes unanimously. Now we will move on to a discussion for Board Policy KHBA School-Related Fundraising. Mr. O'Neil, you're on. And Dr. McCabe?
So tonight, we're bringing for discussion some recommended adjustments to Board Policy KHBA, which is our school-related fundraising policy. It's been many years since this policy has been revised, and we felt it was timely to look at it again for any pertinent updates to ensure that we offer schools flexible options for appropriate fundraising. As with any policy revisions, this comes to you for discussion this evening, and then it may return next month for action. As always, we also provide the related administrative regulations for your information. I'll ask Mr. O'Neil to provide the highlights.
Thank you. And so for those of you in the room, you might have a revised version in your packets. And Mrs. Savigny, I think you may have received that via email. And the revised version from the earlier submitted version is, it was only a couple of typographical errors and a sentence cleanup, no substantive differences. So a couple of things. First of all, as Dr. McCabe said, it's been a long time since we've revised this policy or the regulations. So there is just a lot of sort of movement by transferring it from the old format to the newer format that we use now. So it's all still there, but it's, you know, it's maybe laid out a little bit differently. The caps, all caps and bold markup language would be what's changing, or also if there are strike-throughs. Very few changes to the policy itself, which you vote on. Just a little clarity under the guidelines as to kind of what the overall purpose is here, and some clarification of what has been our practice that in general, except in very, very limited circumstances approved by the superintendent, we do not endorse or approve crowdfunding fundraising opportunities or platforms like GoFundMe, and there's a few others like that. So most of the detail is in the regulations, but I'll just summarize for now by saying that the general intent here is to give schools a little more flexibility to engage in appropriate fundraising. I think it's also a reflection that sort of when you don't, when you haven't updated in quite a while, just the cost of things is different. We've spent a lot of time talking about playgrounds lately, and the old version that's now struck such sort of a dollar limit that wouldn't even pay for a playground. And so we've removed that. And then there's some specific clarity added just to make sure that anyone who wanted to talk to a principal or talk to a school about engaging, you know, you can't engage in something without approval that would modify one of your facilities. This isn't about naming facilities or fields as well. That's a separate board policy. A lot of times, people want to buy technology, so this would clarify that if that's the case, it needs to be pre-approved by Mr. Davis and his team because you have to have things that work on our platform and that we can, that also you can afford to replace someday. So there's considerations like that, and curricular materials as well. So that's kind of a high-level view for discussion. I think Mr. O'Malley, because he and I were talking today, may have had some ideas for a legal lens. If you want to let him speak while you're thinking and formulating thoughts.
All right, Mr. O'Malley.
Thank you. Just a few nuances that can be easily fixed. One of the things that the policy and the proposed regulation revisions make clear is that various student groups can engage in fundraising activity. But there's an important point that needs to be made under the Equal Access Act. And board members, I know that you're familiar with the Equal Access Act, but it's the federal law that says that if we open the schools in, at the secondary level, middle and high school, to any non-curriculum-related club or student organization, then we must also allow any other non-curriculum-related student club or organization without regard to the religious, political, philosophical, or other content of speech. The important point that I want to make is that when it comes to religious clubs, the element of sponsorship is not there because of First Amendment Establishment Clause concerns. And so when we have a student religious club, and indeed, we have several, and we've had those for many, many years, and they are entitled to engage in the same activities as other student clubs, such as the key club, the ski club, or the Fellowship of Christian Athletes, or whatever, but without a sponsor. And instead of a sponsor or advisor, they have a non-participatory monitor. So you see a little bit of a backing off from that level of sponsorship. And I raised that earlier because we use the word sponsor, and I do not want us to create a problem under the Equal Access Act. If the ski club can have a fundraiser, so too can the Fellowship of Christian Athlete, but we have the requirement that they have a staff sponsor. And I think we can wordsmith that, address that concern. I know that was not the intent to have a problem, but we can make sure that we don't have a problem going forward.
Thank you, and we don't need a problem.
Right.
And I will say, this, our policy definitely needed to be updated, and I thank you. And there are a lot of typographical errors in here. I'm not going to go through them all, but anyway, I just, and that needs to be fixed. And Mr. Whistler, you had a card up.
Yeah, I just, again, not necessarily for staff, but I really urge all of our principals and APs to socialize this policy with our PTAs and BTOs. I just want to make sure that we're not doing something that would inhibit their ability to raise funds for like playgrounds and whatnot. I'm not aware of anybody using like a GoFundMe or a crowdsourced, but I just wonder if there are any out there that do that, and if it helps them raise money. I just don't want to hurt their ability to raise money for things like playgrounds and whatnot. But again, so I just urge people to share this with your PTOs and PTOs and PTA so that we can get adequate feedback before making a decision next month.
Sure. It'll go out for public comment, and we'll make a point to make sure schools do that. In conversation with Mr. O'Malley earlier today, he offered the beginning of some language. So unless you object, that'll be incorporated when it comes back for action.
Thank you.
If the typos are still in the stamp revised, I'll pull that from here and make sure I have them later.
All right. Any other comments? And I thank you for doing this because it definitely does, did need to be updated.
Thank you.
All right, and thank you.
Quick question?
Sure.
Mr. O'Neil, so this is loosely tied to the advertising policy, right? But it's not the same policy.
There is a, you do have an advertising policy, which is a distinct, separate policy. I think the coding for that is KHB, and so we're not proposing changing that, but they are married together. And so there is reference that no fundraising could occur that doesn't also comply with the conditions set within your advertising policy.
Okay. So can we make these changes without needing any changes to the advertising policy? It sounds like they're separate enough that we can do one without doing the other?
I believe so, yes. There may be, yes. I think the answer to that is yes. There may be reasons to want to update the advertising policy later in time as well, but it doesn't, it wouldn't directly impact these changes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much. All right. At 5:00 PM Wednesday, August 23, 2023, Board of Education meeting with the Carroll County State Delegation and the Board of Carroll County Commissioners will be in the boardroom at 125 North Court Street, Westminster. At 3:00 PM Wednesday, August 30, 2023, we will have a Strategic Plan Work Session in the boardroom at 125 North Court Street, Westminster. And at 5:00 PM on Wednesday, September 13, 2023, board meeting with public participation in the boardroom at 125 North Court Street. Do I have a motion? Oh, excuse me.
I just want to remind the community, ribbon cutting for the new Charles Carroll Community Center is this Saturday.
Oh, okay.
At 9:00 AM, and I believe Commissioner Vigilanti will be there.
Oh, yes. Thank you very much.
All right, now I need a motion to adjourn. So moved by Ms. Pataglia, seconded by Dr. Dorsey. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you very much.